Order the, oh, I guess we got a minute left. Alright, sorry, camera's not going here. While we're waiting on that, um, do I have a volunteer of the football players or cheerleaders Alright, we're gonna call and order the October 23rd, 2013 regular board meeting. The time is 6:31. If you'll rise and move to the center.
Pledge of Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
That must be a part that I didn't learn at school that you guys were excited about. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray. Here. Gonzalez. Here. Moore. Here. Pearson. Here. Pop. Here. Raisik. Here.
We're gonna go ahead and go through with the consent agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda. So, move.
Second.
Pearson and Raisik. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Moore. Yes. Pearson. Yes. Pop. Yes. Raisik. Yes. Gray. Yes.
Now, if I could, just as a matter of, I'm sorry, um, correct. At this time, agenda items only. We'll accept people that wanna come forward and make any comments pertaining to items on the agenda itself. Limit your comments to three minutes. Provide us your name, address, and as always, be nice. No takers? This time, I think if it's alright, we'll do this out of sequence here on this. And, uh, we have a resolution acknowledging the, uh, great accomplishments of our local football association and the lightweights making it through and winning the Super Bowl. So, Mayor, if you're with me?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A resolution congratulating the Moni Mavericks Lightweight Football Team. Whereas the residents of Moni are fortunate to have individuals to donate their time, effort, and other resources to help guide our local youth. And whereas through the efforts of these volunteers and coaches, one of the best local football teams has been formed with respect to their age division. And whereas the Moni Mavericks Lightweight Football Team is composed of dedicated coaches and parents who have instilled the characteristic of hard work, discipline, and dedication onto the players. And whereas these players have become recognized as a top-flight team with a spirit of determination and pride. And whereas a great team effort secured a championship in their division by a score of 26-6, and now proudly known as the Super Bowl Champions of the Lightweight Division. And whereas the team's coaching staff, players, and parents have made the residents of Village of Moni proud of their success, not only as athletes but as young individuals. Now therefore, it's resolved that by Mayor Jay Farquhar and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Moni, Will County, Illinois hereby recognize outstanding accomplishments of the 2013 Lightweight Division Super Bowl Champion Moni Mavericks Football Team, and wish everyone associated with the team continue successful on and off the field. Uh, be it resolved that this resolution being in effect immediately upon its adoption passed this day, October 23rd.
I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution. Okay, that was Gonzalez and Raisik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pearson. Yes. Pop. Yes. Raisik. Yes. Gray. Yes. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Moore. Yes.
At this time, if we could get the football, uh, I'm sorry, yes, resolution number on that one, sorry.
2013-8.
2013-8. At this time, if we could get the, uh, locally renowned Moni Mavericks to come forward and,
How about the cheerleaders?
While these kids are getting lined up, I just want you guys to know how wonderful it's been to work with Chad and the leaders of Mavericks. It's great to have people that are dedicated to the success of our children with plenty of opportunities to help them get involved.
Before everybody disperses, can I get a straight shot for the camera?
Yeah, I just, I need a, I'd like one, one for a shot, yeah.
Delta, just take a, Delta, just take a one to the better shot. Everybody take a, like.
Take a seat, yeah. Mary, please, take a place.
One more shot of that, guys.
Turn around, fellas.
Aaron.
One second, if you can handle it.
Yeah, you gotta get in the microphone. T5. They gotta get the microphone.
You got it. Derek, Derek, get on his hand.
CJ, you wanna do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
CJ'll do it.
I'll do it, I'll do it, I'm doing it.
You got it.
No, 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 he's gonna bring it in the microphone. CJ.
Get on there! Get on there! You can't be there! We can't be there! Don't get me there! We can't be there! Don't get me there! One, two, three! One, two, three! One, two, three! Don't get me there! Get on there! You can't be there! We can't be there! Don't get me there! We can't be there! Don't get me there! We can't be there! One, two, three! One, two, three! One, two, three! Let's say two, one, two, three! Yeah!
That's it.
You guys take care to walk, we'll leave you upstairs for the entire meeting. Thank you, guys.
When is for the BIA? Okay. Um, what channel was that? D A L. Where's D A L? Oh, it's D A L. Nice, no, no, no. Thank you.
I like those pants.
I know. Well, not yours, Eric.
Where were we?
You forgot to announce W P A L.
Yep, the consent agenda was approved. Um, clerk's report at this time? Administrator's report?
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of items on the agenda. First item is a resolution regarding traffic signal at Moni Manhattan Road, and the resolution is to allow us to use our fuel tax dollars for that signalization. I might take just a minute to explain. Uh, that signalization project was actually budgeted in two different areas. Uh, one would be in motor fuel tax, also in, in the TIP 4. And that was to give some flexibility to this board to allow, um, uh, taking of those funds from either one of those, uh, of those accounts. Um, subsequently, uh, we have had some activity in redevelopment agreement in additional activity in the TIP 4, uh, as it pertains to redevelopment agreement. And, uh, staff recommendation would be that we pay the signalization at, uh, at Egyptian and Moni Manhattan Road out of motor fuel tax dollars in the amount of $75,000. I've also included, I believe, that there's a letter in there that states that they are, uh, they will take the $75,000 and consider this full payment for the project. Um, that is because originally they sent us a, uh, an invoice for the amount of $156,000 and some change. Uh, we, um, responded so that we could, uh, contest that amount. They agreed, so this is back to the original amount, which was covered under an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Moni, County of Will, and the Village of University Park. So, uh, not to belabor this anymore.
I, I would just like to bring up the fact that, as a matter of good record-keeping and staying on top of the issues, uh, very commendable on the part of the administrator for not just cavalierly, uh, signing off on the export expenditure, but actually taking it to task from the original agreement. I know of another municipality that was not that quick to respond, and, um, but fortunately for us, it saved us $75,000. So, uh, thank you to the administrator on that. So, you need a motion to approve that?
We, uh, yes, sir. We would need a resolution number that would go on top of the, uh, Illinois Department of Transportation resolution and then a motion to approve.
Okay. I'll make the motion. Resolution and, yep. Okay. Okay, so that'd be Pop and Gray. Resolution number, sir?
That'd be 2013-9. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. This, was this agreement originally done when? And was this something the village actually sought after for this traffic signal? Uh, was this a project that, you know, the county brought?
Yes.
Wanted, wanted to implement, and then it came to us, they'll pay for it?
Actually, as part of the, that's a very good question, um, because I believe the intergovernmental agreement was done under the previous administration, so you really have no knowledge of how this came about. Um, with the proposed reconstruction of Egyptian Trail, uh, and IDS intersection design study is required, would have been required at the corner of Moni Manhattan and Egyptian Trail. Uh, that design study would have called for signalization. We would have borne the full cost of that signalization under that project. With the county coming forward and signalizing that, we were able to reduce our cost to one leg of that project, so actually 25% of the cost of the signalization. And that's why the village did enter into that intergovernmental agreement. It actually saved us, uh, they estimated the signalization cost alone, not the road improvement, uh, that happened on Moni Manhattan, but signalization at $250,000. And so, we actually, our leg of it was $75,000, and that fulfills our obligation under the intergovernmental agreement.
With the changing of the design, when that Egyptian Trail project is done, will those lanes be widened, and if so, laying down the strips for, for the signalization, will we have to end up paying for that, or is that also part of the cost for that?
At the signal, uh, the lanes are as wide as they're going to be. They've been restripped, and the sensors have been already put into the road. The actual Egyptian Trail project will not go, um, as far north as the total intersection. It'll start a couple of hundred feet south of that intersection.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, question. Uh, where did, where did the Will County of Will come up with that $156 number?
Uh, the total cost of the project, that would have been 25% of our cost, but what they added into that was the, they included as part of the project, the reconstruction that took place on Moni Manhattan, um, east of Egyptian Trail. If you recall, they put in all the curbing, road bed, and everything. They tried to incorporate that as part of the to- total cost of the project. Based on the intergovernmental agreement, I disagreed, uh, talked about it, submitted that in writing, and subsequently, uh, they acquiesced it. We appreciate that.
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're hoping we weren't paying attention.
Thirdly, too, I wanted to ditto with Mayor Farquhar said, too. I know, thank you for watching that, too, because, um, several other municipalities, but I kinda just let that slide, so thank you for that.
Yep, I appreciate it, thanks.
Alright, so can we get a roll call on that?
Trustee Pop? Yes. Raisik? Yes. Gray? Yes. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Pearson? Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, that being said, item number two is actual authorization of the payment to Will County, uh, for the Egyptian Trail signalization in the amount of $75,000.
Okay. And a motion for the?
That will show us. Sir, thank you.
Okay, Pop and Pearson. Roll call.
Trustee Raisik? Yes. Gray? Yes. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Pearson? Yes. Pop?
We didn't, uh, we didn't need any resolution number, that's just an approval. I just answered Trustee Pop's.
And, uh, under item F3, uh, is a tree replacement policy, and at this time, um, I may wish to defer until the, uh, until the officials report, uh, so that, uh, Trustee Gonzalez can follow up with that.
That'd be fine.
That concludes my report.
Okay. First item under my agenda is, um, the approval, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to cancel the second meeting of November and the second meeting of December. Um, in the past, this has been the practice, and considering that the second meeting in November is the day before Thanksgiving, and the second meeting in December is actually Christmas Day, um, I'm assuming that you'd rather spend time with your families during those evenings than, um, your extended village family. So, um, I believe that if we have need for any meetings, that we will call a special meeting if necessary to deal with the business of the village during those times, and I'm anticipating that we may have one during that time anyhow, so we're not shorting the, the public in proper representation, it's just, you know, trying to be aware of the fact that you guys have a life, too. So, and if I could, uh, I'll accept a motion to approve the cancellation of those two meetings. Anthony? I'm, I'm sorry, was that Gray, Gray? Alright, so Raisik and Gray? Yes, sir.
You anticipated being on a Wednesday, the, if we had an additional meeting, or next?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. Not necessarily, no.
I'm glad we decided to do that, because I was losing sleep, woman, if I had to at Christmas time. That's great, Mayor, thank you very much.
Jim, I'd expect you to be here with bells on, my friend. Please, no visuals. Alright, and then we just had the resolution. Uh, yes, please, sorry.
Trustee Gray? Yes. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Pearson? Yes. Pop? Yes. Raisik? Yes. Is there a resolution up there?
Just an approval. Um, we've already provided the resolution for the Mavericks, and that admittedly is, uh, I, I, I just gotta tell you all that working with Chad has been phenomenal, and, um, you never know what you're gonna get into with some of the different organizations and the inheritance of stuff with an administration that Chad has been wonderful to work with, so I just wanna go and record for that. Um, we have, um, the pending, um, commission appointments that we're working on, and can you imagine that with the government shutdown, there were some delays in getting those processed, and we don't have all the information back we were looking for, so with your permission, I just want you to acknowledge that, you know, we're, we'll have that hopefully by the next meeting, and, um, some of that had to do with federal, you know, background checks and all that kinda stuff, and they weren't really in a real big hurry to take care of us, can you believe that? Anyhow, uh, I don't see that being a problem long-term, but, um... Anything else you guys need to, from what was old business on, under my agenda in the past? I know we are working on a couple of pre-annexation agreements, and we'll give you a heads-up on, as it gets closer, on, uh, some conditions on that, so. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I, I was inadvertently, uh, omitted the opportunity for EMA Director Ruben Baptista to make a report that I think is pertinent and should be made public at this time.
Sure.
Regarding, uh, his endeavors there, so Ruben, sorry about that.
Alright, good evening. Uh, just a quick update, um, I know time's on the essence, but an update for EMA. Our status, um, now that the dust has settled with Fall Fest, and we'll move into our next session with our fitness programs, what we're endeavoring to do is to reach out to specific individuals that have, um, some type of first responder experience, training, um, either currently or from the past, specifically law enforcement, firefighting, or EMS. So, um, in a nutshell, the strategy plan is threefold. The first is to develop a core unit with, um, individuals that have this training, this profession. The second being, uh, develop a support staff, a group of people that do not necessarily have first responder experience, but wanna play a vital role, have reached out, expressed interest in being part of our team. And thirdly, is to develop a specified, uh, unit. Uh, my experience that most EMA groups are pretty much, um, standard across northern and central Illinois. Um, they offer the same thing, they have the same training, the same equipment, same resources. Um, there are a few that stand out that have, um, an expertise in search and rescue, underwater, aquatic search and rescue with, uh, watercraft and sonar equipments. But, um, we're very fortunate in this area, we've got a group of equestrian, uh, a club, uh, about twenty or so in this group, and several of them have, uh, specific training in search and rescue, multi-search and rescue. So I've reached out to the leadership of this group, and they have expressed great interest and enthusiasm in being part of the team. So we will be able to offer, um, a unique resource and make that available not only to the village, to the area, but to other mutual aid, um, EMA organizations as well. So that's kinda where we're at right now. I've reached out to, uh, we've got eight people so far for our, our leaders. I've reached out to the three other ones that wanna be a part of this. And then, uh, if I could just mention one last thing, um, one of our goals, if I can, uh, use a term, is, uh, develop a farm team. I want to reach out to young men and women who've never been exposed to first responder training, have no experiences, but, um, I think if we have the right kids that are interested, we'll have seasoned veterans that we can, uh, expose them to, people with experience, knowledge, and, and influence, and influence these kids. And, um, it's a calling, to go into a first responder profession, it's a calling. And we might, uh, see some kids who realize what their calling is and expose them to this, so that's the plan, we're moving forward. We'll go through a process, and I may be calling on a few of you to help me with, uh, once we get into the interview panel, and to, uh, conduct our interviews, uh, with our people that are interested. And with that, that's my report.
Do you have, um, any, you know, with the, the farm team, do you have interest in like a police or fire cadet program and using those kind of youngsters or?
We have, yes, we have discussed that, and it is absolutely a possibility. This is also a, a complete volunteer force.
Correct.
That is correct, yes. Well, as far as vehicles, you know, because that, that becomes an issue also on, you know, maybe large fires, or, um, I know we have a couple. Are, are we planning that at all, maybe instead of allowing or trading in our old police vehicles or police cruisers, maybe to slide that down to your name?
I have been in, uh, discussions with, uh, Ruben, and, um, as we approach the upcoming budget season, uh, we will be programming dollars in there for vehicles, whether it is new or used, or we will certainly take a handing down, if it's worth handing down, and, uh, we will be tapping our, uh, and have already, our on-staff mechanic to provide us some history on those vehicles. So, uh, absolutely, we are, we're venturing out and taking a look at, uh, at the most feasible and reasonable means of, of providing transportation. There are some requirements that I'm sure Ruben could expound on, but that, uh, EMA has, uh, to be certified, and we're working toward that. Ruben, I would, if you would, touch on your training and the potential of what we have to do to join the mutual aid agreement there.
Sure. Um, in order to, to move into a realm where we have, uh, an agreement with other agencies, we have to be able to provide resources as well, hence mutual aid. So, if, uh, if we were to request, and as we ran into this with Fall Fest, I made a request, and it realized, I at first have to have a team in place where I could provide vehicles, personnel, equipment, et cetera, um, training, um, to other agencies. So, you brought up a good point, that's one of the resources we need to have in place, our vehicles. I've gotta be able to say, I could provide this, this, and this, in order to... I've gotta be able to say I could provide this, this, and this in order to receive the same type of response back, so that is important in order to move into that realm and that's the steps we're making. I'm looking at going to some training, writing up some grants so we can acquire, obviously, some equipment and monies to assist us. As far as my training, I've been through NIMS, I've gone up through the supervisory level to be able to respond to catastrophic situation, et cetera. And so that would be the first step for not only myself to continue that, the training, but also to get the team as well on board and get them through the certification levels that are necessary. And I will also be reaching out to the board as well because there is an introductory level as well for board members that is imperative to go through in the event we were to experience some type of, you got?
And if I could just ask a couple questions here. You talked about the cadet program and I think that, you know, there's certainly a lack today compared to when I was younger, it was a long time ago, from what would be vocational training and things of that sort where you have mentoring and different types of programs like that. And personally for me, I think the idea of a cadet program, I know we were fortunate enough to have the assistance from Orland Hills, they sent some of their police cadets out and those young men were, as part of the curriculum that they're in, the cadet program that they're in, they have to accumulate a couple hundred hours of community service type projects like that and this is just a great way for kids to get introduced to some of those roles. And when we talked to the Boy Scouts who are typically one of the organizations that coordinates the insurance and such for the cadet programs, it was interesting to find out that they actually have a cadet program structure that's available via police, fire, local government, or the case may be, so there's a great opportunity to introduce our youth to various aspects of what is necessary for the community to function and function well and it has to do with community preparedness. And Ruben, one time you shared with me about, I forget his name, Officer Friendly or something like that, that sounds kinda creepy, but.
We're going back a few years.
But share with the trustees and the rest of the audience here, a little bit about what caused you, what inspired you to get involved the way you did.
Sure, sure. Well, going back, this is mid, early sixties, Chicago Police had a program called Officer Friendly and way before DARE and these other types of organizations, they had them around in school projects, but in any event, an officer came, Chicago Police Officer came and my last name being Batista, sat in the front row and was the first kid called upon and pretty much went through a quick training, a quick little seminar, and I made a lasting influence and hence, you know, my field was law enforcement, almost twenty-seven years with the state police, but that planted a seed and that seed took root and, you know, with that, made a career of it. And so if we can do something like that and just plant seeds.
So while we're in the process of doing community preparedness, we're also helping career preparedness for some of the youth, so I think it's great that we can tie the two together and so, I think, anybody else have questions for?
Thank you, thank you. Now, of course, we have our municipal police force, would this, how would this at all intersect or coordinate with the fire protection district?
This would open and expose them because there will be training with the fire department, with the police department, with EMS services, and so it gives them an open door, an avenue to see at firsthand. We'll also reach out, have Chief Nealon, he'll send an instructor over just to give us a basic orientation on what the role of a firefighter is, just to give these young men and women an idea of what that world entails.
So it's a good recruiting platform for all departments, really. I mean, Public Works might actually find some good influence there as well, so if I understand correctly, whether they end up pursuing anything within the village itself or an external department like the police or outside of the fire protection district, it's just an opportunity for them to be exposed and have their eyes opened to other opportunities, so it could be a good recruiting tool for the fire department as well.
Absolutely. So if anybody has someone in mind that you wanna send their way, feel free, have contact with me and I'll enjoy sitting down with them, talking to them.
I think on the youth program, you have to have a minimum of five to get it started?
Yes.
I believe it's five?
Yes, five. We've got one so far.
Okay.
What's the age of the youth?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yes.
I thought it's high school age for the cadet program.
Well, for EMA specifically, but for what we're talking about with Boy Scouts, we can go high school, I guess, actually even younger than two.
Preferably junior high. Preferably high school.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing further under Mayor's agenda, Mr. Trustee?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Under the officials' report, trustee Pop, do you have anything in the sun?
No report.
Okay, that's fine. Trusted Gray?
Yes, this Saturday night, we have our Halloween happenings here, right on the Pavilion, from six to nine thirty, we will be having hayrides, giving away free hot chocolate all night, we do have a DJ for those three hours, three and a half hours. In fact, everything has went well, we do have costume contests, we will be giving away pumpkins, we do have, I believe, six dancers that have given us gift cards, if I'm not mistaken, we do have that for prizes, we'll be doing hayrides all night, hayrides will be a dollar piece, kids will get hot dogs, first hot dog will be free and then anything after that will be dollar piece also. In the past, we've done the pumpkin contest, we're not doing that this year, we're just gonna be giving away smaller pumpkins which have been donated from, I believe, the conical business, the towing business, so again, that is just Saturday evening from six to nine thirty under the Pavilion. Have you mentioned a barfire?
No.
Yes, we do have a barfire too because it will be nice and chilly, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez, would you like to discuss the tree ordinance?
Um, this is, yes, just very quickly, there's a board action request in front of you in speaking with Administrator Wallace and we had talked about this when we passed our tree ordinance and the replacement program that we were going to do as a policy in addition to the actual tree ordinance. So in that keeping, in a couple conversations that we've had in the last month or so, and we had talked about offering like a, a lot of suburbs offer like a cost-share program with the village in replacing those trees because the homeowners get tired waiting, frankly, for a tree replacement in the parkway and we know that it's our responsibility to maintain those trees, but for curb appeal and, you know, things, people want to replace their own trees, so we thought to bring a replacement policy and a cost-share with the village that the homeowner is taking upon themselves to actually go purchase a tree and that we, as the village, would like to help them with the cost so long as they're abiding by our tree ordinance and getting an approved tree, species of tree, that it doesn't go beyond our twenty percent limit of any species in a subdivision and that it's the right size and measurement of two and a half inches. So what we'd like to do is proposing this as, and we'll meet it in the form of a motion, to reimburse homeowners up to fifty percent of the cost of the tree, up to one hundred and twenty-five dollars, whichever is lower, in the first, for this budget period, up to the first ten homeowners who submit their proposal and their receipt and that proof that they put in the tree and approved species tree from Department of Public Works.
Those funds are being?
Available from our roadway budget.
Okay, that's fine.
On the tree replacement. Additionally, Mr. Mayor, trustee Gonzalez, specifically because we do have some energetic residents that replaced their trees ahead of time and this one could be, or should probably be considered retroactive so long as it conforms to the tree ordinance that was passed, however, in the future, we would be looking for the, any resident wishing to participate to sign up and receive or obtain a permit prior to purchasing the tree so that we have some control of exactly what type of things are. But for right now, trustee Gonzalez thought, and I agree, that we should at least limit it as a pilot program for the first ten residents and one tree per resident because sometimes you have corner lots, you know, they may have three or four trees that belong in the, we wanted to open it up and get, hopefully get ten different residents that would participate in this.
And I would assume this will be the same policy will probably perpetuate going forward as much as funds are available for that? Is that saying, I'm asking if that's kinda?
As I understood it, you know, this is a board policy now, so that's in addition to our ordinance, this is a board policy for each year.
So as we budget forward, if we have greater funds available for that, then we can allocate more than ten?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And that would come back to this board for them.
Each time?
Not each time, if you wanted to change it from ten residents to fifty, that would be before the board.
Right now, we've been paying so much right now in removal?
Exactly.
That we have a limited amount that we can do right now?
And the village itself will take on a tree replacement program. This is just for those residents as trustee Gonzalez alluded to that, you know, wanna take it upon themselves, don't wanna wait, and so this is another opportunity that we can help repay them or assist them.
So this is a line item, budgeted item already, or is there just a general fund that you have been drawing from?
Tree, a tree is a budgeted item, there was twenty thousand dollars in that line item for this year. Most of that originally was intended for removal, most of that removal or a good portion of that has taken place, so now we're trying to take any leftover funds directed toward this because we're in a prime time right now for certain species to be planted and then we'll be better prepared as we move into the new budgeting process. If this board desires to, you know, budget more money toward that, that's fine, we'll have to, you know, make that happen.
This year was the first time it was a budgeted item?
Uh, no, a tree, the tree program or tree replacement or tree care really is, has been a budgeted item because we've always had to trim trees in the parkway or take them down and that has many times gotten beyond our scope, beyond our ability to handle those big trees, so there's always been a line item in there to handle that removal process, but this year it was budgeted for twenty and maybe next year we can find a way to increase that because of the devastation caused by that avalanche storm. And additionally, I would like to add, we are still, we will continue to pursue grants as they become available. Part of our process is to get, you know, have a tree inventory completed, that perhaps us for grants when they become available, but we'll see how that goes.
But having the program in place and having a mechanism already available to us brings us that much closer to being ready for a grant.
Most grants require your tree inventory, they require you to have an arborist that you call, you know, they don't have to be on staff, but an arborist that you, that the municipality defers to on any types of questions, so we're, we are setting the groundwork for that with this tree ordinance.
And the gentleman, we have been using that as the arborist, has he been spoken to and he's cool with it?
Yes, and we have had an arborist who has volunteered his time generously, you know, very generously until he's found full-time work as well, but now we've also identified two other arborists that are under contract or, you know, very close to a contract with us that we can call at any time.
Thank you.
Mayor, especially, or somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Alright. So Gonzalez and Pearson? Yep.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anything else from the officials? Okay. Anything in our old business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, have we received a full Fall Fest report yet, has that been compiled yet? I was asked a couple times over the weekend, you know, to see any final numbers.
I haven't seen the final files, but I know, I believe the minister has been tabulating files on it.
I can speak, I have been working with Ruben, just in staff meeting yesterday, we are waiting for two outstanding items to clear and then we will have, Ruben will provide a report to all the trustees.
Okay.
You bet.
Anybody else for old business? Okay. Anything in our new business?
Yes, sir. What? It, you know, as a truck driver, there's something that comes to mind every time I'm getting off the exit, I hear people, drivers using their J-brake or their engine brake and it's getting loud. There's been, with this, the funding for Iliana coming across and possibly the increase of truck traffic in the area, I believe it's become important that this village adopts an engine brake, an excessive engine brake ordinance, because it's starting to get a little ridiculous around here. I don't know if that's something that needs to first go to P and Z first.
Well, I think it'd be more, better reviewed, Sergeant Rook, do you have any insight into it? Wake up!
There's a lot of villages in the area that have a momentous, does have one, feature has one, it's just, it's basically a traffic ticket for using their J-brake or their air and it's a noise violation as what boils down to it.
How is our enforceability of that affected based on the fact that most of that is probably taking place on the ramps, which is under our jurisdiction? I'm not real sure, maybe even, I'll even ask Ruben because of state issues.
A lot of it, a lot of it is not so much on the ramps, a lot of it is when they come over the bridge and they start slowing up for friendship drive or the truck stop with a pilot and now that we have a stopway, an Egyptian M and M, you have a lot of the problem there too. And it's just pure laziness.
Yes.
What it boils down to on the truck drivers' mark.
Okay, that's fine. Do we have jurisdiction if somebody's using the air brake, I'm sorry, engine braking, on the ramps? Do we have any jurisdiction over that at all or is that a?
Technically, we do. We have jurisdiction north on I-57 about, yeah, maybe to the end of the ramp in South on 57, we just don't enforce actively because we don't wanna take over the calls down there.
Right, 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 okay. Okay. Is that something that the trustees feel that we should look into implementing a ordinance prohibiting that?
I think it's worth looking into, but then the enforceability becomes an issue.
Well, the enforceability in town is not a problem.
Not at all.
It's, the only thing that becomes, you know, not debatable, but whether it's problematic is pursuing the ramp issues and it's.
And one we have proposed to.
All entrances.
Yeah, yep. Well, many communities do have those signs.
Sure.
That would not be a bad idea. On our main corridors coming in to have that sign, it's not allowed, it's against the law and whatever the signs normally say, there's no braking.
Speed up, don't slow down.
Mr. Mayor, if the board decides that's an avenue, at least they'd like to pursue, I could certainly coordinate with Chief Zitgar and the attorney to get some sample ordinances and bring them, you know, bring them before the board and if that's the way you want to go, that'd be fine.
Okay. Are you guys good with pursuing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So does that need to be informed over motion?
No, it'll be in motion, once it's presentable and accurate, so thank you.
I have just one other little thing that kinda goes along the same route as that of being in the Culvers parking lot and then the truck parking right up against it, there is probably three feet between the end of the trailers and the parking lot of Culvers and I wondered if anybody's ever spoken to?
Yes.
Either side and they get?
Yes. To answer your question, the answer is yes. There is a little bit of reluctance on the Petro side, however, we feel that we're going to be able to get to a resolution of that matter simply by installing the parking stops. Once the tandems hit the stop, you know, we'll ask them to. Once the tandems hit the stop, you know, we'll put it, ask them to put in the larger ones, the trucks generally will stop. Even on those tandems that are movable and are slid forward for turning radius purposes, if they hit the stop, they certainly won't go back as far as some of them that we have seen there. We have some documentation regarding that, and we are pursuing that and trying to manage that situation.
The previous parking arrangement at the Windy City South truck stop from years past was not the way it is currently. They changed the parking pattern, the diagram. It used to be a pull-through parking, so you pull through one way and you pull out. And I actually found some, probably a couple decades ago, we found some aerial footage where it showed where they were parking at, and clearly it was not the same as it is now. It's gonna be a problem with one of those trucks, it's, the tandems are hanging in the air in some cases, and somebody's got a large enough vehicle, they're gonna crush the vehicle that's in the Culvers parking lot.
All right, well, thank you, that's the final short question, thank you.
Along with that, in my, a couple times we've gone to Culvers, a few times I should say, white...
How many times?
Pulling out of Culvers, you are, your vehicle bounces violently. Now, I don't know if that's Will County's elevation, or what happened with Culvers, but I never got bounced around so much in life. I really mean it, it's very violent. If you're not strapped in, you wouldn't fly. Again, I didn't hear your remark, Mayor.
That's gonna be a joke.
But that is a danger to it, I think it is. I wonder if DJ could look and see if it's Culvers? I have a question, Trustee Pop, is it as you exit Culvers onto the shared driveway, or exiting the driveway onto Moni Manhattan Road?
Yeah, Moni Manhattan.
And, okay, exiting Culvers onto Manhattan Goldie.
Okay, so technically, just so you understand, the Culvers parking lot doesn't exit to Manhattan Road, it exits into the lane that goes to the motels. So when you're exiting the motel lane, is where you notice a problem?
That elevation was not changed during the construction project at all. That road, that elevation at one point was proper. If it's deteriorated, you know, we can easily see if it's deteriorated on the private side or the public side, that is a county road, and if it's bad, we'll have DJ on it. That's my question, because I never entered that area until Culvers was built, and now we're in the shared. And it's pretty bad. Yeah, hopefully they'll take the seventy-five thousand, we're gonna send them and fix that road for us. I don't think it's a good thing.
Question is, where is that parked? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Juan.
No, that's okay.
Okay, you're still in the parking lot. Is that something enforceable by law enforcement here? Parking, for the trucks hanging over, you know, would that be something enforceable on a private parking lot?
It's really more of a trespassing issue if you really get into it. I would think, would it not be if somebody doesn't like to take somebody's truck parked in their parking lot, and it's not really posted anything?
What the trucks technically aren't parked in their parking lot, they're not, have the Culvers property.
Well, and they're claiming airspace as that, as jurisdiction.
Right, airspace is what the issue is. And that is more of a zoning issue, and that's the pursuit that we're taking.
There's a fence or a wall up there.
It wouldn't stand very long for us.
That'll be down.
Well, they could ask them to do the concrete, that's all we can do. Okay, Trustee, or, Trustee Horn?
So many of us were at downtown last weekend at the Illinois Unischool League Conference. We had talked about, as far as getting the approval to go to this, that we would, each of us would give a two to three minute report on one of the clinics we went to or the seminars. We may not be prepared to do that tonight, but I'm wondering if we should put that on the agenda for next time.
We can do that, and I think that's advisable, and if Cortrager could add that to the official's reports for the next meeting.
May I ask when that was decided? We decided we had to give reports.
We suggested that we give reports.
Back when it was approved for the group going down there.
So it's probably end of August, first, then start of September. You're right, I don't think there's, I don't think there's an ordinance statement we would give a report, but...
No, but it's a measure of accountability to the public, you know, we're spending money to go down and improve our skills, you know, what are they getting from? You know, did we go down there just to have fun? Or did we actually accomplish something that, you know, the community can be proud of? So that's a valid question, and valid, you know, I think the community deserves a response on that, so that's... And some of it's easier to quantify than others, some of it's, you know, there's things that are, you're gonna acquire, that you're going to understand, that you don't necessarily, may not be as gifted in articulating, but that doesn't mean you didn't learn something while you were there that's truly gonna be of value to the community. So I would recommend, based on Trustee Horn's reminder of this, that review your materials and come back with, you know, a few bullet points of things that were very important to you, the things that you may not have known, did you know kind of things that, you may have known other things, and you just reaffirmed some other information you had. It's, and sometimes the community get to hear what we learned as a summary, you know, it gives them a taste of what we've been from down there, so... Okay. Any objection to having a brief summary in the next meeting? And at this point, we have open to the public, non-agenda items. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and come to voting, give your name and address. Anybody? At this point, we will, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make that motion.
And this is, I believe pertaining to matters of personnel. Oh, collective bargaining, okay. The time is seven twenty-seven. Sorry, that was, roll call please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
I don't believe we'll be long, so, we will recover. The time is now seven forty-six, we're returning from executive session, roll call please.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Present.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item number one, on actual regarding executive session issues, I'll undertake a motion to approve the DPW clerical collective bargaining agreement.
So move.
All right, Pearson and Racing, roll call.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, yes.
And that is upon final approval of council.
Sure.
Thank you.
As stipulated. And I undertake a motion to approve the police collective bargaining agreement with the stipulation of the attorney's final review.
So move.
Wait, 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 wait. Pearson and Gonzalez. And roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez? Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
And the time is now seven forty-seven. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
As well.
Trustee Horn and Trustee Racing. Roll call please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Discuss the session.
Anything else?
Yes, yes, yes.
Everybody have a good night.